Welcome. This is the Murray City Municipal Council Committee of the Whole for April 6, 2021. And again, welcome. I have a statement to read, which is, "Public notice is hereby given that this meeting will occur electronically without an anchor location in accordance with Utah Code 52-4-2074 due to infectious disease COVID-19 novel coronavirus. The council chair has determined that conducting a meeting with an anchor location presents substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location because physical distancing measures may be difficult to maintain in the Murray City Council chambers. The public may view the meeting via the live stream at www.murraycitylive.com or Citizen comments or public hearing comments may be made by having them read into the record by sending an email in advance or during the meeting to city.council@murray.utah.gov. Comments are limited to less than three minutes and include your name and contact information." So, um, the meeting agenda will include the approval of minutes and we have four discussion items. So, are all council members present?
Yes.
Great.
Rosalba?
Rosalba, are you? Okay, Rosalba and myself are present by Zoom, so this is going to be interesting, but anyway, I'm sure we'll be fine. Okay, the first is the approval of minutes for the Committee of the Whole for March 2, 2021, and the Committee of the Whole for March 16 of 2021. Are there any questions or changes regarding the minutes from council? If not, then I would appreciate a motion and I'm fine to take them together.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from March 2 and March 16 of 2021.
Great. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And Brooke, would you call the roll?
Yeah. Mr. House?
Aye.
Ms. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Ms. Dominguez?
Aye.
And Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Let's start with the, let's start with discussion item number one. Do we have Stan Lockhart present?
Yes, he is.
Great. Okay, Stan, um, we are to discuss ranked choice voting. Take it away.
Thank you. It seems like just-
You have 30 minutes, by the way.
Well, I hope I can take less than that, but you know, the second you say you're going to, you don't, so I'll do my very best. Two years ago, council, I was here before you talking about ranked choice voting. And as we went through it and had a discussion, um, at the end of the, at the discussion, it was kind of, look, we might have some interest in this, but first our county clerk has to agree to do it. And, um, and so I thought that maybe I might not be back for a while, but about two weeks ago, um, our Salt Lake County clerk, um, sent out a notice that she was willing to administer ranked choice voting in 2021. And so that is why I'm back here today. Can we, do you by any chance have that presentation that we could put up? By the way, as I look in the, in the camera here, it looks like I've got a lot more gray hair than I had two years ago when I was here. So, um, we had a county clerk two years ago after we did our first, uh, our first group of cities with ranked choice voting. She said, you know, for cities, it's better, faster, cheaper, it works. And so we've kind of started using that as a tagline because ranked choice voting really is better, faster, cheaper. So to just review what ranked choice voting is, um, your, your voters, instead of just putting, um, a, a dot next to the name of the person that they like the most and scribbling in that little circle, they actually, uh, find the person that they prefer the most and then that person gets their number one vote, then the person they prefer the second most and that person gets the number two vote and so on. And you actually rank your choices in terms of your preference. And then those votes are counted just like they would in any election. And if nobody gets more than 50%, then you go through this process, which does one candidate have an absolute majority? If the answer is no, then you go eliminate the last place candidate, you redistribute the votes from the eliminated candidate to the voter's next choice. And then you go through the process again until one of the candidates gets over 50% of the vote. It sometimes is called instant runoff voting, um, so that you have these series of instant runoffs until one candidate gets to more than 50%. So our first time around, we had two cities opt in, uh, Payson and Vineyard. And these cities were very, very different in, uh, in the types of constituents that they had. Payson is a, is a city that started off about the same time Utah County was established. And so they have a lot of older voters. Vineyard was the fastest growing city in America between 2010 and 2020. And so they've got a lot of younger voters. And so we were interested in knowing if those voters would have differing opinions of ranked choice voting. But we're going to see here that they actually had, um, overwhelmed, in both cities, they had overwhelming success stories. So 86% of the voters said they found ranked choice voting very much or somewhat easy to use. Only 44.2% found it not at all easy to use. And these are voters in both cities. 82.5% of the voters said that ranked choice voting should be used in future elections. And both Payson and Vineyard have already opted in for 2021. We went to candidates as well now, and this survey was done by the county clerk. So it really was an impartial assessment of, of how candidates and voters and the cities felt about it. But in terms of candidates, you had 87.5% of the, of the candidates that said they had a positive impression of ranked choice voting and no candidate reported a negative impression. And 75% of those candidates would prefer to use ranked choice voting in future elections. So, um, the legislature started this pilot in 2018 and after the election of 2019, they recognized the success of the, of the pilot. The previous year, they committed the cities and the county, Utah County for their participation. And then last year, um, the legislature and Governor Herbert expanded the pilot and officially encouraged all cities and towns statewide to use ranked choice voting for their upcoming municipal elections. Now, you might ask, why is the legislature trying to get cities to do this? Why don't they just do it themselves for partisan elections? And here's the reason why. They really want to know how Utah voters respond to ranked choice voting. Nationwide, there's a very positive experience in the cities that use it. In fact, one of the cities that chose to stop using it about 10 years ago, Burlington, Vermont, just voted to start using it again because there are just some real advantages of ranked choice voting. And I'll go into those in just a second, but the, the legislature said before we use it in partisan elections, let's see how the, the voters respond. Let's see how Utah constituents, uh, feel about this type of voting. And so that's why we have this pilot. It's really so that we can figure out whether or not it makes sense for partisan races. Uh, it's now passed last week. Whoever did the slideshow did it, what you could say about a week after the legislative session was over, but the legislature passed House Bill 75, which, which just simply updated some of the provisions in ranked choice voting. So, um, it provides the legislative body of municipality is the one that makes the determination to participate in the pilot project. The reason that's important is that in some cities, the mayor thought that they could just do it unilaterally. I had a mayor call me up after this bill passed and said, can I just enact this, Stan? No, you can't, interestingly enough. It also instructs cities who wish to participate in the pilot program to communicate with their intent by providing written notice to the lieutenant governor and to the city's county elections official before it was just to the state. It establishes the date by which cities must provide written notice. And this year, it's, it's actually the second Monday in May, this year it's May 10th, to be eligible for the 2021 municipal election cycle. And last but not least, it permits a city to contract with any local political subdivision to administer the election. Next. So here's why ranked choice voting. And, um, I can tell you that, uh, I've now spent several years digging deep into ranked choice voting. The first thing that you should know about election processes is that there is no perfect election system. And in fact, there's actually a theorem created by a researcher that says that there is no perfect election system. There are, there are benefits and there are weaknesses of each system. And so it's important that you look at what those benefits and weaknesses are, and then you, and then you try to figure out what makes sense for your city. Um, there are proposals for additional election methodologies at the legislature each year. And I think over time, cities will have multiple options of different ways to run elections. But whenever those come up, it's just a matter of looking at the pros and the cons and figuring out which one works best for you. So some of the advantages, some of the strengths in ranked choice voting is that it's going to save you money. While it's legal, while in the law, you're allowed to use it in a primary and a general election if you so desire. The way to save money is to only have a general election. You save half the cost that you're spending on elections by just going to a general election. And because you have such a small number of voters come, come vote in primaries, it really does allow the majority of your, the greatest number of voters to make the decision on who their elected officials are. It also provides a shorter, less expensive city campaign. So not only is it less expensive for the city, but it's less expensive for the candidates as well. Because they don't have to spend a bunch of money on a primary and then spend a bunch of money on a general election. So the mayor, Draper, as we were discussing this, Draper, he said, Stan, I had to raise $50,000 to run in a primary and there were three candidates. One of them got eliminated and I had to run exactly the same race and raise another $50,000. He said, it would have been so nice to just do it once. And, and that's one of the reasons that I think Draper's opted in this year. Um, so it's, it's shorter, it's a shorter campaign season. You, you really start seeing signs in September and October rather in, rather than June, July and August. Uh, there's less voter fatigue. It's ready for cities to implement ESNS, the, uh, well, in Salt Lake County, it's Dominion. Uh, they've, they're up and running and, and able to handle ranked choice voting. Keep going. Voters can more, can more fully express their will. Foundational to our representative form of government is the right to vote. And when you allow voters to more fully express their will at the polls, that is a good thing. It allows them to not have to do these calculations in their head. Well, wait a second. I've got to vote for that person because if I don't, someone else might win. Instead, they can freely vote for the person they want the very most and then freely vote for the person they want the second most and not be disenfranchised because their first place vote person has no chance. There's a winner by a majority vote. I don't think that's something imperative anymore in this country, but there was a time where we really believed that the people that got elected should have the majority support of the citizens in their, in their districts. It eliminates the spoiler effect. So there are all sorts of games that are played in traditional voting. So I'll just tell you some of the games that are played. If you've got three candidates who are very similar, let's just say that they're three sisters who are running for the city council, they're running for council district two. And they're Dale sisters. And let's say you have a one issue candidate out here. Those three can split 65% of the vote and this person here with 35% can slip in and be the winner, even though the vast majority of the citizens there would prefer one of those three. And it happens all the time where you get these one issue candidates who will get, uh, 35, 40% of the vote and slip in, even though the majority would have preferred someone else because the vote got split. Or maybe there's the spoiler effect. This happens more often in partisan races, but I'll give you a good example in the fourth congressional district. The difference between McAdams and, um, oh, who's our congressman? Owens. McAdams and Owens was like 3,000 votes. There were 12,000 Libertarian votes and there were about 5,000 United Party votes that could have made the difference. And in ranked choice voting, you could have, you wouldn't have had those spoiler effects out there with, with a, with a candidate that just siphoned off enough votes that somebody else won. Now, in that case, the same winner probably would have won this election. But there are many cases where the person that, um, a person that you would, well, what's the right way to say it? There are many times where, uh, it would have made a difference and the person who loses really would have won. Here's another one. Now, in Murray, you're not going to have this problem, but in many of our cities, we have multi-winner races for council. And in those multi-winner races, sometimes a candidate will say, only vote for me to their supporters. And they get a statistical advantage. And in almost every city that I go to and make this presentation, when they have multi-winner races, I can just see council members look over at the person who did that with their particular supporters. And it works. And it's, and it's really a flaw in our, in our methodology because it allows, it allows one vote to weigh more than another vote. In ranked choice voting, it's true that you get to stay in the race, but the votes still count just the same. And, and, and using those types of strategies don't work with ranked choice voting. Keep going. One more thing, it produces more civility in elections. So you say, well, Stan, that's, that's got to be good. And at a time where we've got polarization off the charts, uh, what's, what are you talking about with more civility? And here's what ends up happening. Because you want people to vote for you, you're going to run your campaign and you're going to talk about issues that you care about and you're going to talk about your vision for the future of Murray. But you're not going to put down your, your, your opponent. You're not going to, yeah, there were many times where I ran for office where literally I didn't recognize the person they were talking about because they do everything they can to, uh, smear your character. In ranked choice voting, you're penalized when you do that because if you start smearing somebody's character, you're not getting their number twos. You're not getting their supporters' number twos. And so there's this built-in incentive in ranked choice voting to have more civil, more civility in our elections. And that is really, uh, one of the best reasons for ranked choice voting. So your next steps, if you decide you'd like to do it, your legislative body, the council, would need to vote to do it before May 10th. You need to communicate that intent, uh, by providing written notice to the lieutenant governor and the county clerk. Uh, and, and then away you go. The filing period is in August. The campaigns begin in earnest after Labor Day and, uh, by, by Election Day, you have a winner. That's my presentation.
Can I ask a question?
Well, that was short and sweet. Thank you very much, Stan. I'm sure we have plenty of questions from the council, so have at it.
Can I ask a question, Diane?
Of course.
Stan, um, how many cities are you familiar with that? Okay, there's two cities that did it back in, um, have done it in 2020?
In 2019, yes.
Now, they're doing it again in 2021. How many, are there any others committed, I guess?
Yeah, there are.
Okay, thanks.
Um, we have, um, we have Payson and Vineyard and Draper and Lehigh and Alta and Newton. And there's a couple other cities that slipped my mind right now that have committed so far. We expect to have between five and 10 cities that opting in for this year.
I hear Riverton is also one of them, is that correct?
Yeah, although they're discussing it about, about now. They've actually voted to do it, uh, but they're talking about it again tonight. And so I don't want to speak too quickly for them. I can tell you this, on May 11th, I'll know for sure.
I've got a couple of questions if I can.
Sure, of course, go ahead.
How does it work? Is, we've got three people, we've got five people running. Nobody gets over 50%. So we take off the bottom one, move those votes up, and then if somebody goes over 50% with those votes, it's done?
Correct.
And you just keep going on until somebody gets there. And my second question is, uh, when we're calculating these, the software is already in place. It's, that will make those calculations and, and move the last person off and move all those votes where they need to be.
Yeah, and, um, Dale, if, I'm going to guess where you're going and, and let me answer a question before you even get it. It may not even be the question you have. But, um, some people say, well, you're not going to be able to have running totals during the evening when the election's taking place. And I think, and there's truth to that, you know, you, you can kind of get a feel for who's leading the night of these days if, under the traditional system. And it's harder to do that with ranked choice voting. But in a day and age with vote by mail, we actually don't know on election night who's won anyway anymore. And so you can still run ranked choice voting calculations just like you run, just like you can show the current things, but there's no guarantees until the canvas of who actually wins. But it's just a little more complicated for the, for the casual voter to look up there and say, oh, my, you know, my favorite's in the lead or my favorite's behind. It's not quite as easy for that to happen.
Okay, thank you. But my main concern is to make sure it's all automated and-
Yep, works just fine.
And it works.
And we've got great visuals, great, great visual, um, graphs of who's leading and how it's working and what's happening round by round on the instant runoff. So, I mean, I mean, it, we actually do show voters what they, what they're looking for, but we do it mostly through graphics so that it's easy to understand.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Stan? Okay, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Diane.
I have a question. Stan, I'm wondering, what is the advantage if you're not going to have a primary? I understand if you are going to have a primary, it's going to save you a lot of money not to have to do that, but if there's only two running, I'm, I'm confused about the advantages for that. If you could go over that again, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, sure. If only two run, ranked choice voting won't kick in. So it only kicks in if more than two candidates are running against each other. Here's what you do though, you, you, if you have five seats that are up for election and there's only one seat that has three candidates, you're spending an awful lot of money to get a poll on who's ahead. And so implementing ranked choice voting really will save you money from not having to have that primary. And, um, and it's, and it only kicks in if needed.
Okay, Rosalba?
Um, well, one, my first concern is, I've only had two emails sometime last year about this, um, that have people who are pro. And I haven't really heard anything from constituents since, so I, I don't know what the movement is on there or if other, if, if any of you have heard from constituents about this. The second part is, um, what is it going to cost the city of Murray? What are the breakdowns of that cost within the county and, and who splits and what do we split? And also the educational piece of this?
There are multiple ways to answer your last question. In terms of the amount of constituent feedback, the council and mayor would be far better to talk about it. I can tell you this, people don't really tune into, uh, elections until about 72 hours before an election. So it's no surprise that you're not getting much feedback. And really, the, uh, voters are not big fans of ranked choice voting until they use it. So to give you an example, both the Democrats and the Republicans use ranked choice voting in their conventions last year. And, um, at least on the Republican side, when, when they did a survey of delegates, they found that 72% not only liked ranked choice voting, they want to use it again. But if you ran a, a poll in Murray today, I don't think you, you might not even get above 50% because people just aren't familiar with it. And so there's, there is a voter education piece that has to happen, but that's probably the reason you're not getting a whole bunch of feedback is that voters just don't pay a lot of attention to elections in general. On the cost side, um, so we've talked about the fact that the way that you're charged in elections is you're charged on a per active voter basis. So if you have 10,000 voters in Murray, you're charged the same amount for a primary as you are for a general election, even though you have a fraction of the turnout. So on its face, you get to save half the cost of your election budget. But you're using a new system. So you're going to want to spend a little more time and effort educating voters on what that new process is. You don't want them to come in cold and get their vote by mail ballot and have to figure it out then. And so you're going to want to, uh, spend more time talking about it on your social media and on your website. In fact, there's a, there's an app called Rank It where you can actually have sample, uh, ranked choice voting elections. What's your favorite city park? Who's your favorite council member? I know, I, what's something, you can do whatever, right? And you can, and you can have your citizens be engaged in ranked choice voting, um, examples in getting ready for their, for the real election. The state has $200,000 set aside to help cities do this without bearing additional costs. Those funds can be used in a variety of ways. Two years ago, they were used almost wholly on voter education. And the cities, uh, created a little video that was branded as their city's video. And they, uh, sent out a mailer and they, um, they developed some content where they were able to, um, make those accessible to voters. They had open houses where they would run some of these mock ranked choice voting elections as citizens came to their, um, to their open houses. But it's true, you will want to spend more time. It doesn't necessarily have to turn into a cost to the city. That $200,000 that the state has set aside should cover the additional costs. So I think we could say with confidence that you will save half the cost of your election. Oh, and there's one other cost. The vendor, Dominion, is going to give the county at one time charge of $25,000. And then that charge is factored into the cost of the election. And at the end, the county clerk takes the cost of the election, divides it amongst the voters who participated and then charges cities based on that. And so there will be, uh, um, there will be some additional costs from that. We believe that that $200,000 can, can pay for that additional cost. But we won't know that until the state elections office has a conference call with cities that opt in and they start deciding how they want to spend those resources. Two years ago, it did not cost any additional funds on the part of cities.
Okay, we're running, let's see, out of time. So thank you, Stan.
Diane, uh, two more questions that are kind of important. I know Kat has one, hold on.
Oh, okay.
So with the pilot program, is that $200,000 tied to the pilot program? So if for cities that want to switch to ranked choice voting but don't do it now, would that funding be available at another year? So this is like that opportunity to use that funding for education?
Yes, thanks for asking. It's really designed for those cities that want to be the pioneers. It's, it's, it's meant to help them offset any additional cost. Once cities use it this year, if we, let's say we have 10 cities use it this year, it'll be kind of mainstream by the time we get to 2023. And, um, and so we're not going to get the same kind of help from the state.
Thank you for clarifying that. And I just want to say, um, I think there's something to with other cities getting on for a pilot program of that sort of broad education that's going to spill over across city boundaries and understanding ranked choice voting. Um, I'm personally a huge fan of ranked choice voting. I think it really does give voters that opportunity to have their voices and votes feel like they really matter in a more substantial way. And having looked at a primary and said, I really love this person, but strategically, I really have to vote for this person if I want, you know, which feels awful. which feels awful. So I am a huge fan, so thanks for coming to talk about it today.
Okay, real quick, Diane, I'll, I'll go quick. So Stan, I, when I watch some of the video and information, if, if you vote for just one, say you just, whatever, that is still works. But if you vote for two, that happens to be number ones, then that throws the vote out.
Correct.
So, okay, so you just make, and it's like you said, voter education is what the biggest thing is for us to do.
So one of the things we looked at very carefully were the number of spoiled ballots in Payson and Vineyard. Because spoiled ballots indicate voters either get it or they don't get it. And we had, we had pretty much the same percentage that we have in any other election. So that tells us that voters do figure this out really quickly. In my more cynical moments, some, those who oppose ranked choice voting really want to tell me that voters are too stupid to figure it out. I know that's not what you're telling me, Brett. But, but, but my opponents, when they keep making that case that it's, you gotta spend grundles of money on voter education. Yes, voters need to be informed, but it is, it is so simple. And once you do it, you like it. It is, we just discovered over and over again that until you do it, you're kind of hesitant. How do you game that system? I kind of know how you game the other system. How do you game that system? And, and so you're, you're just suspicious of it. And then once you use it, it is so pure for the voter. Like Kat said, you don't have to do those mental mathematical calculations. I'm going to tell you a real quick story. And I'm so sorry, Madam Chair, just please bear with me. I was talking to Greg Hughes. Greg ran for governor last year. And he said, Stan, I won the most counties, but they were all small counties, and so I, I got creamed. He said, but the weird thing is, until the day of the election, our internal polling said that I was running neck and neck with Spencer Cox and John Huntsman. And he said, for the life of us, we could not figure out how our internal polling could tell us that, and we could lose the way we did. So he said, we went back and started talking to those voters. And here's what they said. The polls kept saying that it was between Huntsman and Cox, and we didn't want to waste our vote. And that's that mental mathematical calculation that voters have to make, that I can't vote for my favorite because I've got to make my vote relevant and I've got to make it count. And so ranked choice voting is so pure for the voter. If your first choice is a, is somebody that has no chance of getting elected, you're not being disenfranchised. You're still in the game and you still get to have a part in choosing who your elected official is. That's one of the best things about it.
All right, thank you, Stan. Now, what I need from the council is direction. Do you want to continue with this? Do you want to go forward? Do you want to take it to a vote? So I'm going to ask each of you to just tell me yea or nay. And let me, let me start with Rosalba. Do you want to go forward or not?
That was on me, sorry. I'm going to say yea.
Okay. Brett?
I'm going to say yea for a vote, for a vote.
Okay. Kat, yours is yea?
Yea.
I, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I figured. Dale, what about you?
Yes.
What is your sense?
I'm good with it.
Okay, so we're going to take it to a vote. We'll get that scheduled and provide the information to stand by the, I guess, May 10th.
Diane, are you good with it?
I am.
Okay, okay, I just wanted your opinion because I like your opinion. So thank you.
Yeah, no, I think, I think we should take it to a vote, so, anyway. All right, awesome. Stan, is that helpful? Stan?
Oh, I had put on my mask. Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your presentation. We really appreciate it. Now, let's go to the next one. We're running late. The discussion on a text amendment to section 17.12 of the Land Use Ordinance relating to Planning Commission Compensation. Melinda? Melinda Greenwood?
Okay, let's see. You are all seeing the same thing I am, the PowerPoint presentation. So this is a relatively straightforward item. And we're bringing this today as a housekeeping item when some point a few months ago, we realized that we had changed the Planning Commission Compensation through the budget process a couple of years ago, but had not updated the code to reflect the current amount. So the text amendment before you is to change the amount listed in code from $25 to $40, which is what we have been paying them for the last couple of years. Just a brief comparison of some of the other cities around and what they pay. The average stipend that commissioners are receiving is $53. So we're not the highest, we're also not the lowest. We're kind of right there in the middle where we would want to be at $40. And the stipend really just kind of helps the commissioners, who put in quite a bit of time. Under normal circumstances, they're driving back and forth between the city hall, the council chambers, and they also drive out to the site of any agenda items that come to them. So it helps reimburse them for some expenses that they may incur during the course of their volunteer duties on the planning commission. So we had this item in front of the planning commission on January 21st. We mailed public notices just to the affected entities since there wasn't an address to identify with this application. We didn't receive any public comments. And the city, or excuse me, the planning commission voted 7-0 to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council. So we have just the finding of fact here that we've listed that the expense incurred, the $40 per meeting, is reasonable for the performance of the duties of the planning commissioners. And then we have a recommendation to the city council tonight to approve the staff, or excuse me, the text amendment to change from $25 to $40. So if there's any questions, I am happy to answer those for you on this item.
Questions for Melinda? Counsel?
The only thing I've got to say is I don't think $40 is enough. That's about $1.75 an hour for what they do.
They do put in a lot of work. You know, it's, it's a rare day where we have a small agenda. And like I said, a lot of them go out and do site visits so that they can understand exactly what it is that we're talking about. There's a lot of homework involved and reading packets. And they, they do great work for the city and we appreciate them.
Are there other questions? If not, Melinda, I have, I have a question. Maybe this is for the mayor. I'm just wondering, do we compensate other commissions that we have? Is this the only one?
Generally, we do not. I think the stipend was put in place, as Melinda mentioned, as a reimbursement for the fuel that they use to, because they're expected as part of their duties to go out and look at these, these, these projects and these proposals that are coming in. So it's just, it's just meant as a reimbursement for their fuel for that. But, but no, I don't think we have any others that, that are, that have a stipend.
Okay. All right, I didn't think so, but I wasn't sure about that, so. Okay, if there are no other questions for Melinda, then thanks, Melinda.
Thanks, Melinda.
Let's see. All right. No other questions, then we'll go to number three. That's you as well, Melinda. So it's the discussion on a general plan and zone map amendment for the property located at 344 East and 404 East, 5600 South. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So this application sounds a lot more complicated than it is. I'm going to go through that with you. But essentially, it's a land swap to help ensure that properties are, have the same zone designation or future land use map designation on the same property. So we do not allow a property to have, for a single property to have two different zoning designations. So it, again, this sounds very complicated, but if we get through it, hopefully, it'll be a little bit more steering forward. But there, essentially, a zone map amendment to go from R18 to R16. And then another portion of that zone map amendment is to go from R18 to RM15. And then for the property 404 East and 5600 South, that is to go to, or from RM15 to R16. This is an aerial that just shows the property located here. And I think most people commonly call this property, this one here is a 344 East and this is 404 East. I think commonly, people have referred to this property as the Murray Yellow House. And then this has been, I think, kind of some senior housing or senior care housing. And this right now is zoned RM15, and this is zoned R18. So this is where we can kind of show through the different shaded colors what the intent is for the zone change in the general plan amendment. So moving forward, the applicant would like to submit for a subdivision. But again, before he can do that, the property all needs to be zoned for single-family lots, and it all needs to be within the same zone. So the property as it sits right now includes all of this down in here. And the goal is to get all of the property here for the subdivision into the RM6 zone, or the RM, yes. And then get the property that is going to be exchanged to the neighbors to the east into the RM15 zone. So down here at the south end of the parcel, in the green, it shows parcels one and two. And this extra land will be essentially given to the neighbor that lives here. And then this part will go to the neighbor that lives here. The yellow items will be transferred to the property that is to the east, both of these little yellow highlighted portions here. And then the property to the east will donate the purple portion to the property, the Murray Yellow House property or Monterey property. The acreage of the yellow, these two yellow sections is the exact same as the acreage for this purple section. So that keeps the minimum number of acreage required for the RM15 to stay, to stay the current density that they have and allows the property to be transferred so that they can create an entrance here and then the cul-de-sac. And some of you that have been on the council for a while may recall that there was a zone change, I think, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, for this whole parcel to go to RM15, and that was denied. This is really kind of in the first time that they've had somebody that's been able to come in and figure out how to kind of swap all of these land and make the, make a project work. So this shows, again, the current zoning on 404 East, which is RM15, and then 344 East, which is the R18. So we want to talk a little bit about the future land use map. And it shows here the areas we're talking about. The kind of light orange color is medium density. And that's where the RM15 fits in. And then the light yellow is low density. So this, with the land swap, again, we need to keep that. The same property has to maintain the same zoning. We can't split a zoning across the property. For the low-density residential, essentially a single-family zoning. We have a variety of our zoning destin, or designations that fit within the low-density residential. And in this case, we're talking about R16 and R18 residential zoning, which are single-family lots. And then the medium density, again, the property to the east of, or the property on 404 East is medium density. It's RM15, which, that is where the, they're undergoing renovations right now to turn them into apartments and kind of move away from the senior apartments. But they need to maintain the appropriate number of acreage, again, to have that, that zoning designation of the density that they're at. So here are some shots of the property. Here's the 344 East, and then this is 404 East. Some traditional photos of the site showing different angles. And then this shows the properties down at the, the south end of the parcel where I was explaining some of the property would just be donated. Well, I don't know if it's being donated, but it'll be, it'll be given to the property owners on either side. So we held a planning commission meeting on March 4th regarding this application. We mailed out 171 notices, so within 300 feet of the property. And we did receive one public comment that was in support for the change. Planning commission voted 7-0 to support the general plan amendment and the zone map amendment. And then I want to just go over real quickly the findings and the recommendation, and then I'll, I'll open it up for any questions you may have. But the general plan provides for flexibility in the implementation and execution of the goals and policies. And we feel like this flexibility with amending the general plan still accomplishes the goals. The requested zone change, it has been carefully considered and based on the characteristics of the neighborhood, it supports the policies and objectives of the general plan. And the proposed zone map amendment from R18 to R16 and from RM15 to R16 is supported by the general plan and the future land use map. Essentially, we're just kind of doing a property swap, which requires the general plan amendment. So with that, let me just go through the recommendation, which is that the council approve the zone map amendment as listed here, and then also the general plan and future land use amendment as listed here. So with that, I will try and answer any questions. And I think it's going to be most helpful to just kind of go back, excuse me, to this slide. So let me leave it there for just a second. And if you have questions, I will answer those for you.
Questions for Melinda?
Melinda, is the only part that's going to remain R115, number four? Everything else is going to R, is it R16?
No, the only parts that will mean RM15 will be three, the yellow ones. Number four will go to, from the RM15 to the R16. So this, number four essentially will be a building lot. It shows color-coded versions, it's a lot easier to look at. But number four will become a building lot. That property is being swapped with these two parcels, which are going to the property next door.
At the risk
At the risk of oversimplifying, really what this is about is the zone change from R18 to R16. The R115 property is, is going to remain the same. Basically, except with those swaps with exactly the same amount. So I don't know, does that oversimplify it? No, thank you.
It is essentially if, if they didn't have to do any of the land swap, we wouldn't have the general plan amendment. It would just be a zone map amendment from R18 to R16. But because of the property swap, we have to add in the general plan amendments.
Okay, are there any other questions? That was helpful, Mayor. Thank you. No?
I think they froze, Stan. Shoot. I don't know. Jill, or there you go. Okay, sorry. It wasn't going back to them. Brett, did you have a question? I saw, I
No, no, I, no, thank you though. But thank you for asking.
I'm sorry. Thanks.
Oh, thank you.
Boy, this is hard, Rosalba. I see what you're talking about. You can't see anybody's response. It's weird. Oh my goodness. Okay, so no other questions, right?
Yeah, and we'll be bringing this back to you for a public hearing on the 20th, so two weeks from tonight.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Melinda. Now we're at the fourth and final discussion item, which is discussion on an interlocal cooperation agreement with Salt Lake County to receive property in the public use at 4500 South and Atwood Boulevard. Chris Sowzak, I hope I, did I butcher your name? I'm so sorry.
No, you're, you're quite, quite, quite good, actually.
Welcome, Chris.
Yeah, thank you. And
Nice to see you.
Council members and mayor for allowing me to present to you. I'm going to present my screen. So just going to make a brief so you can kind of look at where we're at. And kind of understand where the parcel is and, and kind of why this has come about. Salt Lake County, I was working, looking at Atwood and 45th. I noticed that part of the road was not designated for public right of way. I saw that it was listed as ownership under Salt Lake County. I contacted the county surveyor. They said that it is a parcel that was obtained in a lien in 1980. It was basically a remainder parcel from when Atwood got punched through post World War II. And as part of the tax lien, there is $91.27. And because it's an exchange between Salt Lake County and Murray City as two public entities, an interlocal agreement is needed. And basically, as you can see in my draw, in the map that's available here, it's in the yellow highlight. This parcel contains our road, our sidewalk and our curb and gutter today. And this will, by bringing this into the city in public right of way, it just kind of helps clean up a parcel that we are missing, that we haven't brought into our public right of way yet. And for $91.27, just end signing the agreement. So for your approval and review and consideration, we are hoping to acquire this parcel that we've already been using for city right of way.
Questions for Chris?
I don't have any.
I have so many questions and concerns about this. Why now? I mean, how did this come up and, and why now?
So I did a little historical background with the aid of the county. So I originally came direct to this intersection because I was meeting with some of our counterparts at UDOT, and 45th is their area. And I noticed that this part, it was part of Salt Lake County and general history of Atwood. The portion to the west was in 1938, Bolt Avenue. It was like a, like an alleyway accessing internal properties. In post-World War II, when the rest of this subdivision built out, this, for all intents and purposes, just got forgotten to be either brought into city right of way. The owners themselves, they stopped paying taxes and the county took ownership of it. It is still available if, for anyone who's willing to pay the taxes and to lessen our burden and our headaches, since we're already using it as a road.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I just, there's a lot of controversy on Atwood right now, so I just was curious why now, all of a sudden, this is coming up front. And, and it's, it's amazing how these little parcels are hidden all over the city. Where they were, they came in, in the possession of the county and probably even in our possession in some way. So that's why I, I thought, why now? And, and it's good to know, I guess, the answer.
Yeah, you know, if I may just elaborate a little bit more, quite simply, because we noticed it. You know, and we try to, when we come about these, we try to jump on them and make sure that we preserve our right of way.
Quite an honest answer, Chris.
So Chris, you're not planning on doing anything else with that? It's just, just so we, so we have it, we're going to continue the, you know, the same thing we have now. So it's just going to
As far as the city is concerned?
Yeah.
Diane, as far as the city is concerned, this is to preserve our right of way. UDOT is evaluating a pedestrian crossing at this intersection, perhaps a full signal. I know that they are undertaking, this is what I meant by but this parcel has no bearing on their project because it is technically already in government ownership.
Okay, okay. That's what I was, I was wondering if there was something else planned for it, or if there was a reason that, that we needed it in our name. But just to keep it the way it is then, pretty much, right?
Pretty much. And just so you know, again, UDOT is considering this, and they will do acquisitions in their names for that project. This is solely for us to preserve our right of way.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Chris? Rosalba, are you satisfied with, with the answers?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. I think that it's been kind of a controversy street, so I'm sure we'll hear from citizens either way about it. And we'll go from there. Thank you, Chris. I appreciate it.
Yes, thanks, Chris. It's always good to see you. You take care.
Great to see you as well.
All right. If there are no other questions for Chris, then we'll go to announcements. Jennifer?
Okay, I just have a couple, a couple of things. The Murray Area Chamber of Commerce is starting their eggs in issues up again. Their first one's going to be Friday, April 9th, at Mimi's Cafe from 7:30 to 8:30. And Fire Chief John Harris is going to actually be speaking at that event. And the next thing I have is also from the chamber. Dexa Body is having a grand opening and ribbon cutting ceremony on April 9th at 3 o'clock. So if any of you are interested, I can get that information to you. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. And with that, we will be adjourned.